I don't get handles. Otherwise they're pointless. The thing with this lid is it just
Good, how are you?
On a hook-up. So you have to be
Dress as always.
Oh, thank you.
Get without the lid, like I picked it up, I picked it up like this one time.
And it
And it, the lid popped off and the water went everywhere. Which was like so frustrating.
Do you want the gavel?
You don't want it?
It's offset.
Dirt. I've never had to use it. Neither has Melanie. I've never seen anyone use it, but.
I don't think to do.
I think so.
Doesn't look like a Sat down to see when you're done.
I hear you want to.
Yes. Fourth of July, I'll be home. It's tricky though.
So.
I know you're busy that week. You already told me.
Probably gonna have the first
Yes.
So it's gonna be
The first twenty-five minutes.
Where's the kids at? I don't know if I have them on, my kids are everywhere.
First twenty-five minutes for these two persons.
So anyways. Stuff right now, I have to decide on. We'll do it.
All right. Good morning. It is Tuesday, June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one. We are convened as the Provo City School District Board of Education. We're meeting at the Provo City School District at Twenty Eighty West, nine forty North in Provo, Utah. The time is currently seven thirty-one AM. And we will begin with a roll call and we'll start with Nate.
Nate Bryson, board member.
Terry McKade, board member.
Keith Rattill, superintendent.
Melanie Hall, board president.
Rebecca Nielsen, board vice president.
Jennifer Partridge, board member.
Gina Hales, board member.
Stephanie Bryant, business administrator.
All right, do we have a motion to convene?
I move that we convene the study session.
All right, motion made by board member Partridge and we are now in study session. Uh, we're gonna turn the time over to to have a social workers' report by Doug Finch.
Good morning, board. Um, appreciate the opportunity today to give a brief report on the, uh, great work that our social workers do in the school district. As you are aware and as per your support, we have quite a footprint of social work support in this school district. And, uh, that is nearly to the point where we're one-to-one as far as having a full-time social worker in each of our schools. And, and we continue to make, uh, growth in that area this year. Um, as we are currently going to be, uh, interviewing for another opening tomorrow morning for, uh, an individual to be full-time at Lakeview Elementary School, helping in that area. So, um, Miriam Campbell is typically, uh, my lead, uh, with social work, um, here in the district office and student services. But because of her, uh, being unavailable today, we've asked that Darren Burdette, one of our seasoned and very capable social workers who stationed at Provo High School, provide this report this morning. So he has a brief little summary that, uh, he'll provide for you and then we'll open it up to your questions.
Uh, thank you for having me this morning. Uh, as, uh, Dr. Finch said, I'm just gonna give a brief overview of the history of social workers here in the district. So if we'll go to the next slide, you'll see that, um, our first social worker was actually Marion Martin. Uh, she was hired in nineteen eighty-six, uh, as the first social worker in the district. Uh, what we learned as we began working with, uh, students in the district is that many of those were already involved with DCFS, with youth services, with the, uh, juvenile court system. And so it only made sense for us to collaborate in partnership with them. Uh, now about thirty-five years later, if we'll move to the next slide, you'll see that we, uh, are in the process of hiring our twentieth, uh, social worker for the district. While we are district employees and can be called on, uh, to serve or meet any need across the district, uh, we do have designated, uh, social workers now, uh, for nearly every school. The two that we currently have that are shared are Canyon Crest Elementary and Edgemont Elementary, where that social worker is actually shared for those two, but all the other schools have a designated social worker for them. Uh, rather than just hearing from me a little bit about it, I thought that I would, uh, talk to a number of the principals across the district to learn from them what they feel the role of the social worker is and, uh, the value of that. And so I've put together a couple of comments that have come from those. The first one is a principal that said, having come from another district, I can't overemphasize, uh, the value and role of the social worker and how they play, uh, what the role that they play in our school. We could not function without a social worker because we have access to someone that understands mental health and that can give direct and immediate crisis intervention and support to both families, uh, students and parents, as well as our staff. Another principal said, the social workers help the school to navigate through the tragic experiences such as the death of a student or also the loss of an employee. Next slide. The social worker, uh, helps to create a culture where it's actually okay and safe to ask for help. Uh, and we've noticed that especially over the last year with COVID, that that's had an impact not only on our students, but on our staff. And they have access services through the social workers across the district. Um, our social worker has helped to prevent suspension and lost instructional time of students by meeting with them. Uh, they've talked about having, uh, an adult who can dedicate that time to the students and the impact that that has had. The next one, having a social worker in the school frees up the counselors to focus on comprehensive educational services that lead to graduation and future academic and career goals. Um, and the last one that I pulled together was, uh, our social worker is highly qualified to address concerns of self-harm and suicidal ideation, which takes a huge load off the stresses of our administrative team. We consider the social worker to be our resident expert in all matters related to mental health and wellbeing and can then focus our attention on other pressing matters, knowing that the student and family will be in good hands. These are just a few of the statements that, uh, I received as I talked with principals across the district about the value and role that they see as the social workers. Uh, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you guys have for us as well.
Darren, can you describe a typical day? How about your typical day?
Uh, there is no typical day. Um, it really varies. Uh, I mean, obviously COVID has played a role. I think, uh, we see a lot of anxiety and depression amongst our students, uh, that also has a role in our faculty and staff. Um, so it's really working with them, creating a plan that minimizes that, that helps them be successful. Um, as we've talked a little bit about, um, the challenges that some of those have as that leads them to thoughts of suicide and self-harm. Anytime that a student is out of the school for an extended period of time, we look at what we call return to school meeting, which brings together a team to wrap around that student and help them with that transition back. Uh, we know that the more support that they have, they have lots of needs, whether those be physical needs, mental health needs, and the more that we can support them, then the better prepared they are to find academic success.
How many home visits do you typically do in a year?
A year? I don't know. On a daily basis? A daily basis?
Yeah.
Two or three. One of the last ones that I did actually came over the weekend. We got a call on Sunday night, actually from the Safe UT app regarding a report, uh, of a student. And, uh, after making attempts to reach the family by phone, uh, at the numbers that we had listed in Power School, we were not successful and so a home visit was done just to ensure the safety of that student. So it really just depends. One of the other things that we found is, uh, students who may be struggling with attendance, we don't always know what those reasons are. And so again, home visits are really critical as far as guiding us to know the reasons and how we can best support students and families.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Gina. Are all of, um, the social workers, uh, either CSWs or LCSWs, or do we have any undergraduate?
Um, all of our social workers in the district are masters-level clinicians. Uh, we do, in addition to the social workers that we have, we typically have, it depends on the year, uh, but we have a number of, uh, interns that we use as well, and those have varied anywhere from fifteen to twenty-some each year.
And those are both BSW and MSW interns?
Correct.
One other question. Um, you, one of the things said that, uh, helps to reduce suspensions. Um, can you talk a little bit more about that? How do the social workers help with, with decreasing suspensions?
Yeah, so really, um, sometimes the easy way would be to suspend them, take them out of the school setting. But what we've learned is spending time with them individually and then, uh, creating a plan to help support them. Again, it, giving them skills that then they can use to navigate the next experience that they have actually creates more success. And then we've learned, not only does that help keep them at the school, but keeps them in the instruction with, uh, their classes.
And do the social workers also work with the staff, like the teachers and the staff, to help a kid stay in school rather than be suspended? Cause my guess is there's issues on both sides.
Absolutely. Um, one of the things that we've really begun to implement, uh, over the last couple of years, um, is, uh, restorative practices, where we really look at, um, navigating that system together, going back and bringing those people together to talk about the conflict and then work towards a solution that works for everyone.
Thank you.
You bet.
I guess my question is, what can we do to help the social workers in this?
Um, obviously, I think we've made a great start. When I started with the district about eight years ago, there were, I was hired or as the, replacing the fourth social worker in the district. Um, at that time, I served, um, three elementary schools, Dixon Middle School and Provo High School. And so, um, obviously the, the sheer numbers, um, the, the issues and concerns that students and families have aren't reducing, they're actually increasing. And so again, I think the support that you've offered has been really, uh, great. And I think as we continue to, um, to move forward in those efforts, then we'll be able to continue to support the families and students.
Darren, can you speak to how the model we run here is unique in the state four districts? Do you know that answer or can?
Yes, I mean, I've worked across the state, so I am familiar with that. There are a number of districts that do have, uh, a number of social workers across the district. In my opinion, uh, the Provo City School District is the leader in the state. Uh, they have recognized the social emotional needs of, of students and families and as we address those, again, they can be more successful. Um, other districts do have that support and so I'm not minimizing that by any means, but the focus and attention. Daily, I'll have teachers who identify needs of students, uh, because they have that relationship and the culture has been established. They bring students either to my office or invite them to say, hey, would it be okay if I reached out to Darren or another social worker and had them visit with you? And so I think it, it really has changed the culture of our district.
For the board, I, I just want you to know that, um, across the district and throughout our schools, teachers generally look at their social workers as being a really important ally. And so they've, they're, they've really embraced the role of social workers. Some places, they see the social workers just kind of another person I don't really understand in the, in the building. But here, there's a good, um, symbiotic relationship between teachers and social workers throughout the district.
The reality is, one of the things that I've noticed is that, um, teachers and staff are actually more open to talking with the social workers. They feel like they can be open about what their individual needs are, that, um, it's open, they know that there's some expertise there that can help them with their given needs, but they also know that there won't be any, there's, there's no threat or repercussions that may come because the title of talking with a principal and feeling like that may impact their employment in some way.
Can I ask a question? Oh, a while back, we had a presentation about, from, about social workers and I, if I remember correctly, our ratio is about three hundred to one, is that right? Three hundred students to one social worker?
Uh, depends on the school. Uh, again, uh, the elementary schools are about that three to four hundred range. Uh, the middle school's a little bit different. At Provo High, there's nearly two thousand students. Uh, so again, where I used to work in three elementary schools, the middle school and that, uh, being able to dedicate that, even though the numbers are still great, two thousand, uh, that's better than, uh, the numbers before.
Do you know how that? Oh, that was school counselors. Okay, I'm getting that, um, I apologize.
Oh, yes, that is accurate. Thanks, Jen.
Okay, okay. I'm getting confused, but do you know how we compare to other districts around our neigh, us neighboring districts or districts in Utah? Do we have a high student to counselor ratio? Counselor to student ratio?
Social workers.
Counselor or social workers?
I'm so confused. It's early, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Social worker.
Uh, again, um, in our neighboring, uh, districts, um, when I began, Nebo School District actually had two social workers. One was a masters level, one was a bachelor's level. Uh, they have increased those numbers. I believe they have, uh, seven or eight social workers in their district now. Um, Alpine, um, are broken into, um, uh, groups or neighborhoods. Um, and obviously they're the largest, uh, district in the state, but also everything that I hear in living in that school district, I know that the resources are not the same.
Do you feel like that is something that makes us unique as well?
Absolutely. And I think families, students, faculty, um, the community realizes the investment that you guys have made and that has made a huge difference to our community, I believe.
And do you feel that Provo has more of a need so we have more social workers? Or do you feel like we're just meeting the need a little bit?
Uh, yeah, I don't think the need is any greater. I think that we have identified, you guys have identified, this is a place where the investment is worth making and it is making a difference to students. Um, ironically, I did, um, over the weekend, I, uh, went to a wedding of a, one of our Fordhamer students and I saw a number of other students there as well. And, um, uh, the one individual that got married was in a situation where, uh, his parents were actually deported and was left without a lot of support, but, uh, through the efforts of social workers, uh, he was able to meet his requirements for graduation and is now has a bright future ahead of him. Another family that was present, um, actually had a daughter that, um, was a victim of suicide, uh, as a fifth grader. Um, and they talked about the impact that the social work program has had on their family, uh, even though that's been years ago.
Is there a school social worker association of some kind?
Uh, there is, there is a national association of, of school social workers. Uh, we have participated in a number of those conferences, again, to collaborate, um, over the years, yes.
Um, I had an experience with, I really liked that the younger sibling at one school, older sibling in another school, and the social workers could coordinate care. And that was a really good experience for me, coordinating that.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, that was the one benefit when I first started. Uh, I remember Lakeview, the, one of the schools that we're hiring for a social worker right now, that was one of my first schools that I worked with as an elementary school. And so it's been great to see those students who started at Lakeview, that then came to Dixon, that then came to Provo. So I've seen those throughout the spectrum of their education, uh, which has been a great experience to be able to support them through that.
Darren, we have to wrap up pretty quick, but you've talked so far about primarily response to services. Do you have, um, services that you go out and do that are maybe a little more proactive? And can you describe those quickly?
Can you be a little bit more specific?
Well, I mean, do you hold classes or do you hold, uh, call meetings with, uh, parents who are, um, parents of troubled students, uh, in one area or another, those kinds of things?
Absolutely. Um, one of the things that we've done, uh, over the years, specifically in response to, to suicide or losses, we've done, uh, community responses for those. Uh, we do have a number, we historically in the district, district have had a program of, uh, parenting, uh, that we have supported. Really, it's looking at the needs and what they are, but yes, we are responsive to those. We do have a number of, um, our different populations across the district as well, that we have parent support groups and we actively participate in those as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for this presentation and tell all the other social workers how much we are grateful for them in our district.
All right, thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Darren, thank you.
All right, we're gonna have a brief update on our attendance policy by Doug Finch.
Thank you, and I appreciate Darren's presentation as well. Maybe just, I'll just add a, a quick, uh, twenty-second addition to the, the work that was mentioned there. In, in answer to the superintendent's question, the, our, our history of working in social work has been to be very preventative to crisis and responsive. But, uh, there is a, a, a tone, as was mentioned, the last couple of years, to try and be more preventative and proactive. Some of the work that we're doing is, for instance, trying to initiate and support, um, social emotional learning curriculum. Uh, most of our elementary schools are in or piloting a program called Second Steps, which allows students to, to really learn some of the significant skills that are associated with their self-awareness and self-regulation, relationship building, uh, being responsible for decisions they make, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a really great thing that not only we're just waiting for problems that, but they're in front in doing what we call the tier-one universal services for students as well. And that's also, uh, making its way into the secondary schools as, as well where Darren works. But it's really a, a very active thing that's going on in the elementary schools, as well as the inclusion now of these wellbeing or wellness rooms that give students a chance to practice those skills of social emotional wellbeing. And the idea of that if someone can bring themselves under control, they're more likely to, to not escalate to the point where they cause a big disruption in the classroom. Anecdotally, as I was preparing for tomorrow's interview with Lakeview's principal, he said, I said, would you like to be there to help interview? He says, oh, this is like the most important person in my building, right along with my assistant principal. He said this, last year, we implemented a few things along with that curriculum and a wellness center at Lakeview last year. He says, I can't tell you how big of a difference that made in keeping kids in school. And so that's just, again, another, kind of anecdotally, but some preventative work goes a long way when it comes to helping students be able to manage their emotions and feelings. And our social workers are in the, in the lead with, working with our principals and doing that. All right, I'll move to the, the next little presentation, which is again, hopefully short, um, but allows you to ask questions, uh, to see how it impacts, impacts our school district. There's nothing more exciting to talk about than student attendance. I think it could be on every faculty meeting agenda and dominate the whole hour that you had set aside. So you have to be careful when you choose, you're gonna open this can of worms. So because of things that happened in the state legislature this last year, we feel like we need to have just a brief discussion about it. So there were three bills that came upward and passed and had to do a student attendance. Uh, the first was House Bill one sixteen, Student Attendance Amendment. This one is, uh, again, a theme that seems to repeat itself over and over recently. What was very prevalent in this legislative session is the idea that the excusing of an absence should not be so difficult for a parent. And this one here just asks that, um, a medical professional does not need to provide a note or documentation to claim that an absent is for mental or physical illness reasons. So in other words, don't require us to go to the doctor and get a note to verify that, uh, this is an excused absence. Just work with the parent and saying, we are keeping our students home for a mental or physical illness and that should be, um, sufficient. House Bill eighty-one is a, is a significant one that when you stop and consider it, this bill adds mental or behavioral health as a valid excuse for school absences. And again, this is all in that arena of allowing a parent, a guardian to be able to designate. We are needing, um, some time off, a, a mental health day, per se.
This is where Alex is today.
There we go. Don't we all occasionally need a mental health day? And it's just recognizing that that is a valid reason, uh, for, um, students in Utah to have an excused absence from school. The third one here, um, has to do with a bit of a moratorium of sorts, right? So we just know going into this school year, and this is what's certainly, um, prompted the need to stop and, and look about, look at our strategies and, and intentions here, um, of what we'd do during this upcoming school year. Cause this bill decriminalizes truancy violations until summer of twenty-twenty-two. So in other words, this whole upcoming school year, it prohibits schools and school districts from issuing and enforcing compulsory attendance. Right, so with that comes, um, not that attendance is not re-expected and not that it's not important, it just takes from us the idea of in your most habitual truancy, uh, situations, a court referral is not going to be supported by the state of Utah. In addition to that, we've learned in working with another outside agency who is typically supported, is particularly in the elementary levels, you know? Um, that truancy referral often goes with a student who's, um, in the secondary level, you know, thirteen and older, twelve or, twelve and older. And, and maybe they can sometimes find themselves working eventually with a real bad problem with ju, you know, juvenile court. At the elementary level, the outside agency that supported them has been more the Division of Child and Family Services. So DCFS referrals have been allowed for what they'll call parental neglect associated with not getting your kids to school. We just again recently learned that the DCFS attorney has also said in light of this, um, Senate Bill two nineteen passing, that they also will put a moratorium on DCFS's involvement in, in parental neglect as it relates to education. So those things were somewhat in place this last school year with, with, um, things that we were dealing with, with, um, COVID and, and how attendance and engagement and the idea of being able to do home study options was, was, uh, was very tenuous and difficult for us to, to get our heads wrapped around. We hoped to some degree that, that things would feel more normal next year and they certainly will. But know that another year's moratorium has been given for us to take those most, you know, extreme cases of non-attendance at school and deal with them internally as opposed to using an outside agency like DCFS or the juvenile court. So in light of that, we've just have a couple of additional slides here. We want to share what the district's current procedure is as it relates to, um, just kind of big picture, what we do with unexcused absences. In light, again, you saw the tone there of, don't fight with parents about whether the kid should be excused or not. That is something that does come up from time to time where there can be some parents who might over excuse or enable students to miss a lot of school. But that's not an area really frankly to, to get into a lot of contention right now. Our goal is to just verify first and foremost whether the student is excused or unexcused. Does the parent at least know where their child is? There's nothing that's more worrisome for me and was it when I was a building principal, when I had kids that neither home nor school knew where they were. If you can imagine for a second, pause and say, the parent thought they got on the school bus or thought they dropped them off at the curb and then gets a call or a notice that they're not in school. I mean, as a parent, that makes me nervous, right? As the education entity, it makes me nervous. The parent thinks they're here, they're not here, that's a concern. So the idea of verifying absences is our first and foremost task when it comes to working with families to make sure that the safety and security, wellbeing of their childrens are in place. So you can see our, our flow chart here has been essentially when we feel like that there gets to be a pattern of unexcused absences, meaning the child or the family is not communicating really well with the school about when they are missing school and for what reasons, right? Not that we're gonna contest a lot of those reasons, as you can see. Uh, we send a courtesy letter, which is a great strategy at tier-one level to say, attendance matters. We expect that your student's in school. It makes a big difference in their educational success as well as their wellbeing and their safety and security, on and on. So we have developed letters and there's lots of examples out there that we're going to refine and, and, and refresh our letters. It relates to, uh, when we have students who don't attend regularly. And that's again, five percent means that you've missed, um, maybe a one day of school in a two-week period of time. I mean, it's just a matter of saying, hey, we missed you and the absence didn't get excused. We need to be on the same page with you about students being in school and being successful. When that courtesy letter maybe isn't enough and the absences, the unexcused absences escalates up to ten percent, the general trend then is we begin to send a little bit more of a, of a firm letter saying, we'd like to conference with you. Not only have we sent you a notice that says that attendance is important, we'd like to sit down and, and see if we can identify some causes as to why maybe attendance at school is something that you're, um, not able to, you know, have as a regular habit right now. Oftentimes, those conversations turn into opportunities to see that there has been an extended illness, some sort of extenuating circumstance at home that's kept them from being there, right? And, and we can oftentimes offer help and assistance. We can also make them aware of how to check their attendance and how's the best way to send an email or a phone call or what are the methods by which they can excuse the absence of the student if they do have a situation that, that needs to be, um, rectified there in that ten percent. That ten percent is also what is clinically, um, right now described or defined as being chronic absence. So in other words, the, the student is ten, attending less than ninety percent of the time is defined as chronic absence. There's a lot of research behind that that says that they're much more likely to not be successful in school. They're three times not as likely to graduate from school eventually. And, I mean, there's just a number of different factors that could be shared with you as to why that's a, that's a target spot, that, that ten percent. If you're missing ten percent of school, that's again, uh, somewhere around, um, one absence per week, something like that. like that, or that there's a pattern there that's going to really impact someone's educational, you know, value of what they're getting. Now, if that conference, which can sometimes take place over the phone, or Darren mentioned, our social workers would get involved in that conference, some of my staff might get involved, some of my engagement specialists who work with truancy and with families. If that doesn't rectify the problem and it continues to grow up to where we're greater than 15% of that unexcused absences at any time during the school year, we will request that there's a mediation that's held. And at that point, we would have someone from student services who is trained in restorative practices hold what they would call a restorative conference or a back-to-school meeting like Darren had referred to it. In this one, we really want to make again, a very intensive effort to say, in a face-to-face setting, whether it be here at the district office or at a school, we want to make sure that we've gotten to the bottom of what is it is that may be keeping the family from being able to communicate effectively with us or find that coming to school is important. When that fails, if that does not seem to rectify the problem, as you can see, that bottom arrow points you down to some other possible agency referrals that can help the school district and the schools reach out to these individuals. I put in red in parentheses, the things that were part of that toolkit in the past, DCFS or Juvenile Court. But as you can see, that those are no longer for this upcoming school year, part of the possible interventions. So we still have access to two things that we feel like can be and have in the past been helpful to us is outside agencies. Youth Services is a function that's actually been put in place recently by the state office, well, not state office, but the state juvenile justice system. Went back about five years ago when they had the juvenile justice reform, and they eliminated what they were calling this prison to pipeline or this school to pipeline thing. They saved a lot of money and gratefully, they turned that money into what is essentially kind of mediation for families. So you can assign a mediator to work with this family. This is especially helpful when you've got a family that might have some different challenges or dysfunctions going on. It might not just be school they're missing, they might be missing a lot of things of being in the right place at the right time. And these individuals can go in and work very hands-on with the family to help maybe change some patterns that are dysfunctional related to attendance. The last one there, the youth peer court, that's something we initiated about four years ago in this school district as well. It's held weekly at Dixon Middle School. Our school resource officers take the lead with that. This is a great one for unruly youth, or in other words, you've got a parent and family who are really all about trying to get the student in the right place, but it's a little bit of a delinquent or unruly child who says, I just don't want to be there, or I feel like I'm going to kind of try and shirk the responsibility of being where I need to be. Youth Peer Court is a great time, I think, for peers to account to peers with mentors, of course, in that system of trying to work out some sort of a change and a disposition associated with not being in school. So those are the couple of the like tier three, we would call the most intensive interventions that we'll continue to try. But we hope that in any sort of tiered intervention system, those ones across the top are going to reach a good 80, 90% of our students and their needs for working out what they need to for getting to school regularly. Next slide. So here's what we've learned. While again, punitive punishment type approaches maybe are a deterrent for some, we find that our most successful approach is when we focus on relationship building, emphasizing the need for engagement at school, engagement as a community, and then the accountability of the student knowing that someone knows where they're at if they're not at school or at home, right? That idea of saying, is the absence verified? Some of the schools have found that when they communicate promptly with parents, they're able to not feel like there's this like, hey, no one's noticing that I'm not at school. It really doesn't matter. In other words, that immediacy of a consequence or rectifying the problem is very helpful. So the courtesy letters have resolved a majority of the truancy concerns. I think one school we studied this summer, as we were reviewing the data, they had some like 175 kids that they were really concerned about for attendance. They sent these courtesy letters along with a follow-up phone call, and something like about 60% of those cases immediately solved the problem, immediately. All it took was that step up there of offering the courtesy letter and just as saying, we noticed and we missed you, and it really matters. 60% immediately were solved by that. Early interventions with students with patterns of attendance concerns also will create a shared commitment. We recognize that there's a lot of families that maybe have the habit or the routine of coming to school. We've identified with the principal's assistants, a number of families that we plan on before we return to school next year, making family visits to them. So I have a team prepared in student services of six family and student engagement specialists who will work with someone at the site level and make over 200 family visits between now and school starting again. We feel like again, that's a way that there's, you're talking to them in a positive light. You're not coming with any sort of a, you've failed, you've done miserably. It's like, we want to make sure that you feel like you're welcome back at school, and we're going to identify right now if there's any barriers or concerns to being someone who attends just wonderfully this next school year. The next bullet here is another thing we found is that works really well is when you can create this feeling, this culture within the building where being there is recognized, it's valued, it's important. This is whether it's whole school or it's even just a classroom. Each of you can think about the class that you had in school where you thought, I just have to be there, I can't miss, and I need to be there on time. What were those factors that made that difference? Had a lot to do with the engagement of the content, probably had to do with a little bit of the good use of time by the teacher, right? Teaching bell to bell, or even welcoming you at the classroom door, or that they noticed you when you were there and didn't, and noticed you when you weren't there, right? So there you can think about some of those factors that go with creating a culture where on the most part, individuals want to be. And this idea of recognizing a performance and improvement can reinforce that positive culture. And then again, at our most extreme and intense interventions, this mediation approach is the best way to address truancy. Just kind of last couple of slides, I'll just let you read through just quickly here. This is what we anticipate as some of the challenges next year. We understand that there will be, I need to rebuild some patterns of regular attendance and expectations again. We do still think that there will be some who will be unwilling and unable to feel like in-person learning is something they feel comfortable with. As crazy as you guys might think this is, that last week when the mask mandate was off and the governor said, don't wear your mask the last week of school, we had a number of patrons who didn't send their kids to school the last week of school. I don't know if, again, that quietly goes unrecognized, but I was flooded with phone calls all that last week saying, this really is terrible. My kid can't be there for the last week of school because of this change. I don't feel safe anymore. Created a lot more conflict than maybe people thought that it was going to be this great mask burning celebration. There was a lot of individuals who are still pretty hesitant, particularly where their kids or all adults are choosing not to participate in the vaccine program. So there's going to be some hesitancy that we anticipate we're going to be working with. The third bullet I kind of mentioned to you, we just need to take on an approach that we're not going to fight with parents about excusing their absences. You can see increasing, there's legislation that doesn't want us to contend with parents about whether it's a legitimate excuse or not, but just be on the same page with them. But when we have absences that may be continually being excused by a parent, that's probably when we'll have to employ other techniques of trying to really bring them around to the idea that attendance at school is important, and just to continually excuse them is a real challenge. And then again, the last two are some adjustments that we're having to make based on juvenile court and DCFS's decisions to have the understate code legislation, this moratorium for the next year. I'll just show you a couple of these are just screenshots of our current attendance policy. I pointed an arrow to something that's going to need to be readdressed. You can see that bullet B. This is kind of longstanding, about eight, 10-year-old attendance policy we have in place. You can see that increasingly, while it's not necessarily wrong in the language that's there, but does the principal have ultimate authority with what we're seeing in state legislation? Or is there a better way to word that in our current district policy? You can see increasingly, an empowerment, I guess is the word I'll say, for parents to determine when an absence is excused or unexcused is the tone. And then the last slide here, these are within the procedures, these are again, three other bullets that I just, or arrows that I point to that say things around the idea of students with excessive absences will need to bring a doctor's note perhaps. Well, we already know now that that's not going to be required. We can't require doctor's notes. Valid excuses needs to be looked at. And this idea about how many excused absences will be allowed in a term, this is part of the elementary attendance procedure, saying a parent has only five excused absences within term, I think that's going to be again, conflict with what we're seeing as some of the things in state legislation. So we're going to refine these and have these in place for our schools coming in August so that they have an expectation of what it is that the district's approach is going to be for attendance for this upcoming year. Not a whole gutting of our attendance policy and expectations for students to attend, but a few refinements based on the discussion we've had right here. I'll pause there and just be open for any feedback, any other issues that you'd see you'd like to bring to my attention as we work on this this summer.
I just have a quick question.
Go ahead Rebecca.
You may have answered this and I maybe have missed this, but do you know when HB 116, 81 and SB 219 were enacted? Are those brand new or are they?
The ones that were part of the presentation day were all part of this last legislative session. So this was just passed or approved, probably signed into law in April or May by the governor.
I just want to say I'm kind of sad that we can no longer get those letters that say, we're going to take you to court. Those are my favorites. It's like, hey, I'm going to go to jail because you're missing class. You better go to class.
Different ways to motivate people, right? And that was one that we were using.
That made some parents sit up. They're like, oh, wait, wait, I better get my kid to school.
So that's too bad. We lost that leverage. Appreciate that Nate, especially from you. I appreciate that comment.
I know that we have, these new legislative bills kind of limit to what we can do because I feel like we've kind of lost that teeth that we have for parents. I worry sometimes that these kids are going to figure out that I don't have to go to school, there's not really much they can do to us.
Well, we can as long as their parents on our side.
That's true.
Or parents find it out. I mean, that's.
And so that connection between school and parents, working on the same goal for the child is going to be key. I think if the parent is not able to parent or direct their child, then you're right, there's going to be some enabling there that's going to be probably a concern. We'll see patterns of that probably begin to come to the surface. Thank you Melanie. Do you have another question or comment?
Just one more question. So I do know that like when Tim Fu, when you were in the secondary, they were counting absences per class? So a day of absences would be four absences? Is that still the way they do it?
No, they're going to look at this as, that's why I put up percentages versus numbers. So we have to work with the idea that if you, when you reach that 5% of any class period that you've missed, then it will prompt that phone call. When you meet 10% in any class period, you can see that this on the board right here is an example of the elementary because it's really easy to count a whole day when you get to a certain number of days. But you're right, there's so many different ways and times that you can miss in a secondary level. So it's a little nuanced there is how they count and work on how many times you've missed a certain class period. There are patterns, as you can attest probably as parents yourself, saying that there's certain classes that the kids were always missing and yet attending others, right? And what was some of the difference? Well, there are all kinds of reasons. We won't get into that. But we really focus on if they're missing a certain class period over and over again, it would certainly push that we're going to have that parent be outreach to by hopefully the teacher, as well as the administrator before of course, the district office gets involved and do some of those first earlier interventions.
Okay. Gina and then Jennifer.
I was just wondering, I was a school social worker myself, sometimes the absences helped us to recognize when there were issues with kids that we could help with. Are we worried that not having, like not having the teeth or not all of these bills that were passed, are we worried that we're going to be missing some kids?
No, it doesn't change our ability to monitor the data. In fact, yesterday all day and then today, I'm reformulating a team here in student services where we used to have one or two people who worked just on truancy and then had five or six people who were called parent advocates or parent liaisons. I'm bringing that team together, so I've got, each school is going to have someone assigned to them who's like along with the social worker, is going to really work closely monitoring the data. And that data is still going to be available for us to see. And when, as you just said very well Gina, usually attendance is just like the outside, the tip of an iceberg. You get in there and you start finding out why someone's not attending, and then a lot of other things come to bear. It could be everything from bad habits to, there is a crisis going on in the family. There could be a medical issue that they're having a hard time dealing with in the home or et cetera, et cetera. So it really is the like the starting point of conversations. So we plan on still having all those conversations. These house bills that were passed, probably more than with those that are just habitually wanting to take it on and say, we just don't want to send our kids to school. And oftentimes, those lead to conversations where we try and find something creative that works for their family, whether it's through e-school, or that they need to do homeschool exemption. Sometimes that's just finding a solution that works for someone who's just not maybe on board with or believing in public education. But the idea that we find the data and tend to people's needs is the goal. That's the main goal of the team and the training we're going through right now is that there's something going on there. This is just a symptom of a bigger cause, right? Thank you Gina. Jennifer.
Yeah, could you just clarify? A lot of the presentation here talks about the number of unexcused absences, but then you also mentioned sometimes parents excuse it without, you know, it's not that they're really sick or something like that. Is the system set up that it still flags so that the schools know to reach out to someone even if it has been parent excuse, they're still missing 10% of class, that's still a concern, right?
Yeah, to get into the conversation about whether they can or can't excuse somebody, we're going to try and move out of that arena because there's just not a lot of backing there to try and say a parent can or cannot excuse an absence. But the same sort of prompt that Gina referred to, when they hit these same benchmarks, whether it's excused or unexcused, we can run reports on that saying, let's initiate the conversation, let's reach out. Maybe the parent is excusing it, but is there something going on because we see an educational impact at this point?
Okay. So we're looking at the percentage, no matter if it's excused.
So it won't necessarily feel as, not that much of this feels extremely punitive, but it's a trigger for intervention. And so even with excused absences, yes, it'll still trigger the conversation saying, is someone aware what's going on in that home? Has someone reached out recently? We're noticing this pattern, or even noticing the whole family's having a hard time as we compare what's going on in the other schools this family attends? Let's do a home visit, let's see what's going on and do the outreach. So yeah, thank you Jennifer. A lot of it is, like I said in that earlier slide, the idea about forming relationships, focusing on engagement and accountability of where people are and their engagement with what the school district office offers is our goal.
Okay, we're going to have to move on. So if you have further questions about this, will you send them to Doug Finch and he can answer those later? I'm assuming we'll be probably getting this in front of us in August.
Yeah, this was an intent to try and give you some ideas of what we're working on. You can see we're not trying to wholesale change the attendance policy, we're being responsive to the legislation, as well as taking on this tone that we really want to take a very restorative, trauma-informed approach to be able to work with families and build relationships versus contention around the whole idea of attendance and engagement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to next have a standards-based grading report, and we'll turn the time over to Todd McKee.
Good morning, Board. I appreciate the opportunity to be before you this morning. I want to apologize upfront, if I'm sneezing and coughing, this allergies are really getting to me this morning, but I'll do my best. I also want to say that when this assignment came out, it was originally assigned to three of us. Anne Marie Harrison and Alex Judd were going to co-partner with me on this. I'll say that one is legitimately home ill, and the other suddenly planned a family vacation to Hawaii. So you're stuck with me this morning. But as is typical, I have a lot more to say than probably the time that is allotted, and I want to be sensitive to the board's time. This conversation around grades, I must say upfront that there's probably nothing that is more personal and sensitive to a student, to a parent and to a teacher than talking about grading. For a student, you know, it's what they love or what they may hate the most about school. There's a lot that we attribute to grades, as you'll see. And you know, I know that students take that on as a kind of a personal reflection of themselves. As for parents, similarly, they're looking at how are they parenting their child? And I'm sure there's some self-reflection on them and also wanting their child to be, have the best opportunities going forward and then knowing that there are high stakes around grading. For teachers, I think similarly, there is again, there's some ownership personally on how well am I doing as a teacher? And that may be reflected in some of the grading practices. What is interesting about this is that teachers get very little formal training through their university work around grading specifically. Now, I think that's changing a little bit with more focus on assessments and quality assessment, but there really isn't a lot out there formally on what is good practice and bad practice around grading. And so that leaves it to the teacher that comes into our school to rely on what they've experienced, rely on what their colleagues may be doing to really kind of pick up their grading practice. And it leads us to this, let me see if I can get the remote to work. It says green, but there we go. This is a. This is a bit of an ominous statement, but I want to start with this. Dr. Dresel, in 1957, he's an educational psychologist, was talking about grading. And I'll let you just read that. I won't necessarily read it to you. As you're thinking about that, I think the question for us is what has changed? Has it changed? Has it changed? The current grading system that most teachers rely on, this kind of 100-point scale, A through F, was originally developed over a century ago. It's a relic of the 19th century of Ivory League schools that used it to try to rank order students. Again, remember, these are students that are probably the most privileged in society, right? And to rank order them to try to give some feedback in terms of employment and so forth. In my 25 years, a lot of things have changed in education. This is one that may not have changed, even though I've spent about 15 years kind of looking at this in different ways. And it's getting to a point, I talked about how sensitive this is to parents and to students. I'll share with you on more indication, but one specifically, I had a very upset parent enter my office as a high school principal who was really concerned and was saying, "What is wrong with your school?" And I wanted to unpack that with him. And I said, "Okay, well, tell me what's going on with your daughter? What's the situation?" My daughter's a 4.0 student, but she just received her ACT score and it was a composite 16. There's a disconnect there. And I think that it's, this has played out even in my own research and graduate work. I was looking at the predictors of success coming out of middle school to high school. The idea is what are the predictors so we can jump on as, you know, Dr. Finch has talked about intervening with kids that may be on the road to failure. And it was really clear in the data that I looked at, that a student with a D in a core subject area in middle school was 10 times more likely to fail their first semester in high school. So there are lots of ways to unpack that around grading. One of them may be that our grades are not as accurate as we think or that we just put too much into them and they have way too much meaning for us to really determine what that's about. This is key because what is our purpose around grades? What is it intended to do? Hopefully it's to convey a level of achievement, whether or not a student has mastered our standards. But if we look at traditional uses of grades, they go from college acceptance and scholarships and financial aid. We're finding, and I think this is really key, the current evidence is saying that even as fallible as grades may be in high school, they're a better predictor of college completion than standardized tests. So there's value to them. It's just making sure that we are looking at it more specifically accurately. But we tie in athletic eligibility, employment. I know for me as a parent, insurance rates, that was a big issue, especially when I had twins that were trying to drive at the same time. I wanted to ensure their grades were up so that my rates would go down. School recognition, and then we get into intervention remediation, credit recovery. There's a lot that we place on grades. As I mentioned, it's a relic of the 19th century. A big issue is this idea that grading somehow should follow a normal distribution curve. And I want to just highlight this just for a second because I think this sticks in a lot of people's minds that somehow there should be this distribution. You only should have so many As, Bs, Cs, and there's obviously going to be some Fs at the end. This is if we left it to chance. This is what the distribution will look like if we left it to chance. But we don't leave it to chance. We provide quality instruction with our teachers every day in the classroom. We provide intervention and remediation for students that are starting to lag behind. This curve, if we're getting this kind of curve in our grading, it means that we may not be fulfilling our obligation to kids because we should be intervening and changing this curve. So what are some of the concerns with the current grading system as we've kind of peeled this back? Obviously, we have a lot of non-academic variables in this. A lot of teachers use grades to try to modify behavior and attitude. Attendance and participation are thrown in here as a way, as I'm sure I was the same way as a teacher. I'm struggling with this student that's not showing up rather than seeing attendance as a symptom to a problem. You know, I'm trying to use a grade as a reward or a stick if they don't show up to class. There are some real inconsistencies and variabilities in just the mathematics of this. And when I start to talk about this, only the really the mathematicians kind of understand this, but, so I have a visual here. But the grading scale is an irrational scale. If you look at the top graph there, there are five grades. There's equal distribution between the grades. There's only one way to get an F. There are four ways to pass. But if you look at the scale that teachers use of 0 to 100, it's irrational because there's a distribution of 10 at the top end for a passing grade and there's 60 at the bottom. And this really plays into the next piece about averaging and using of zero. Right? So oftentimes what will happen is teachers will take grades, they'll grade everything and then they'll average it. And that's how they compute a kind of a final grade. Well, if for some reason I don't show up, I don't turn something in and I get, the teacher uses a zero for that one assignment, I have to have a, I have to have a perfect score on the next three assignments just to get a D. And it begs that question, is that really reflective of achievement? If we go back to what's our purpose, if we believe that grading is to communicate achievement, getting that zero because I didn't turn in an assignment and then three perfect scores and I get a D, is that really reflective of where the child is in their learning trajectory? Oftentimes, there's a lack of clarity and detail on how the grades are calculated. And again, as I mentioned before, there's the use of rewards and punishments. So take a look at this. This is a, I would say is a fairly typical grade book. For a teacher, if you look at three students, if you just looked at this, how, could you determine who is the better student? So student one, this is, for those who are wondering, this is out of 100. So a scale of 100 points for a class to calculate a grade. The first student aces the test, does very well on quizzes and bell work, but not so good on homework. And not so well on the projects, the group projects, and there's deductions obviously for late work. Student two does not do very well on the tests nor the quizzes, but does extremely well on the homework and the group projects, but still has this issue of turning things in on time. Student three is kind of in the middle of the pack, does okay on tests and quizzes, but you know, is doing okay turning in the homework, not so well on the projects and is still, again, deductions for late work. Looking at this, can you tell who is the student that is really achieving? If we were to use just a traditional grade, the grade book and how teachers average, all three students come out to a C. If we start to subtract behaviors like late work, they're all A students. But are they truly the A students? Look at student two who does very poorly on the tests and the quizzes. The majority of their points is coming from homework. And is that the best way to calculate or to determine a student's achievement and whether or not they've mastered? Dylan Williams likes to cite educational psychologists to talk about learning and achievement. True learning is the transfer of information to long-term memory. So if that's how we're gauging whether or not a child has truly learned something is that transfer to long-term memory, if you're getting almost half your points out of homework, is that a very good indication of whether a student has made that transfer? I love this study. This has actually been replicated a couple of different times. It's one of the problems with education's replicability, but these have, these results have been shown to bear out. Another problem we have with grading is somewhat, it can be somewhat subjective. So here are two studies. One, the first one deals with high school English teachers. So 147 high school English teachers in different schools were asked to score two papers, the same papers. Apologize for pop-up number one, which is my typo at 6:00 AM this morning as I was trying to compensate. But you can see the range on the first, scoring of the first paper was from 64 to 97. Same paper. Paper number two ranged from 50 to 97. So on paper one, that paper actually was given a failing mark by 15% of the teachers. But at the same time, 12% had given it a N. There are 30 different grades that were assigned over a range of 40 different points. Now, to not just simply pick on English teachers or the humanities area, this study was then conducted with geometry teachers in math. You would think math is more objective than subjective, but even in math, 128 teachers showed a variation in range between 28 to 98%. So it begs this question about what do grades really reflect? And how, and for me is how do we start to develop some consistency? So if I'm a student walking into a class, I know what to anticipate and expect from teacher to teacher to teacher, particularly in the secondary. It's interesting as well, I focus primarily on secondary teachers because that's my assignment. Elementary teachers are not immune to this. My experience with elementary teachers that, you know, they tend to be more standards-based, you would think. They would be talking about success of students and talking about descriptors of how students can get better in their reading and their literacy and their mathematics. But I know of elementary teachers that are assigning points to everything. And even though they may be providing descriptors for parents to help them understand where the student's strengths and weaknesses may be, they're still trying to calculate this into a letter grade. So what is our intent? What should be our intent? What is, going back to the original question, what should be our purpose be with grading? I love this visual of a learning pit. If you go into most any of our elementary schools, you'll see a version of this. And it talks about what I think is authentic learning. That learning is not necessarily a linear progression, but there are struggles along the way. Actually called this the pit of confusion, that to actually learn something, to master something, you have to enter this kind of pit of confusion and work your way out to achieve on the other side. One of the reasons I love this is not because it visually displays this for young kids, what learning should look like and should feel like, but it's interesting that Dove Seidman at Harvard Law School basically was replicating this visual when he was looking at first-year law students. And what he was trying to do, he and his colleagues were trying to do, is determine what's the difference between an A student and a B student and a C student in my first-year law school classes. So again, these are again, very accomplished students coming in to the law school. But I think it's very telling about learning in general. What he determined is if we focus in here on the very first tiger here, right before you enter the pit, those are the B students. These are the students that kind of navigate the system, they've learned just enough, they have received their B grade and they're done. Over here, obviously on the other end, are the A students. These are the students that got to the B, they had mastered the minimal requirements for the class, but wanted to press forward and actually achieve. And they entered the pit of confusion and struggled through the material and were able to venture out to the other side. What he found is the students down in the bottom, that stayed in the bottom at the end of the grading period, were the C students. These are the students that had the courage to venture in and to really struggle with the material, but needed more time or more intervention to get themselves out. And why this is telling to me is we may have students because the way we've set up the high stakes of grading that are stuck here at just minimal and are not willing to enter that pit of confusion because the risks are too great. So again, if our intention around grading is to measure achievement, what are the things that we're tying to it? What should its purpose be? So if we look at the differences between traditional grading, as we've kind of talked a lot about already this morning, and then this idea of standards-based, I haven't really ventured into standards-based a lot. Standards-based is really to try to change this reality of what we're experiencing in the classroom around grading. It's to focus less about the assignments and the tasks and the percentages and the comparison to other students and to focus more on the student's relationship with the learning goal, with the learning target. What is the standard that we expect students to reach? And then how do we start to provide supports for them? How do we ensure that we're measuring their achievement to that as opposed to other variables such as behaviors, attendance, participation, those kinds of things? It really focuses on giving credence and scoring those items that we know measure achievement as opposed to those items that do not. And it understands that learning is a progression. Where you start on that journey in the class is not necessarily where you end. And we should give greater emphasis on the mastery at the end than we do at the beginning. Again, if I get a zero at the beginning of a class, I've got to get a perfect score the next three just to get a D. And is that reflective of my journey of mastering the course objectives? And we need to really break through this idea that teachers are the only one with the knowledge and understanding of the grading process and what grades should entail. We need to include students in that process. Where I've seen this work really, really well, students are assessing themselves all along the way. They know where they're at in terms of what their grade will be and what the learning process will be because the teacher has set it up to be very transparent upfront. Learning targets, rubrics, things that students can go back and reflect and measure themselves along the way. And they're not surprised at the end of a quarter or a semester by a letter grade. So we really want to try to change that bell curve to be more of a standards-based curve where we've set, we understand the learning trajectory really well and we've set a standard that says we want every student to be able to meet that standard. And then we need to provide the time and the intervention to help students get there because everyone learns at a different rate. Again, it's not a linear equation. It's more episodic, even though it's reflected linearly here. So where are we as a district? Our district instructional strategies committee has been wrestling with this, working with teachers across the district on how do we start to improve? We have pockets and I'm sure the board, you as members of the board have heard from community members where different teachers or maybe departments, particularly in the secondary, ventured into this idea of standard space grading. What we have found that there's been somewhat unevenness because there hasn't been a lot of central guidance for teachers that are really interested in this space. And so the instructional strategies committee has really tried to define a baseline of what it is and how do we start to move forward? We've separated into elementary and secondary, believing that this looks a little bit differently. We've tried to define, okay, what are the nine components of a standards-based learning system? Because we believe this is more than just grading. It's how students engage in learning. What are the minimal expectations of a teacher that moves into this, into this space? What, can we develop a common scale and grade descriptors to break out of that 100-point scale that we know is... to break out of that, that hundred-point scale that we know is irrational? Can we start to develop a common conversion to a letter grade? Now, this is particularly important and in my experience has been a hang-up in secondary. Because why we believe learning and how we report achievement needs to change. There's a lot that's still vested in a letter grade, particularly in secondary. Colleges, even though you, you can send them great descriptors and, and do things different than the traditional grading scale, they, they still understand grades better than anything else. That's the most common, obviously. Scholarship committees, that's really, that really gets into the, in the way of this. They need grades because they just don't have the expertise to kind of, to interpret what schools may be doing. So there's a number of things that we need to do to ensure that letter grades still exist for secondary students. But I believe that moving into this, this space, we can provide better feedback to students and parents and colleges and others that are maybe interested in it by looking at a standards-based approach. And then how do we start to develop systems for recording and reporting that are common? So we develop, again, some consistency. I think the biggest challenge, the, the two big challenges, I think, that we face, clear communication, particularly to parents who have not experienced any other way of grading other than the traditional form, and then consistency across, across schools and within schools, that, when we venture into this. So the nine components that we have identified, clear learning targets for every student, assessments that are linked to those, those targets. And then allowing students multiple opportunities to demonstrate. And this gets a little, I wouldn't say it's contentious. People, once they think about this, they understand, you know, when you learn something, rarely do you master it the first attempt. Usually it takes a second or a third time. If you think about anything, any authentic learning that you've engaged in, in your own personal life, you know, rarely are you a master of it the first attempt. So how do we provide multiple opportunities for students to grow and get better and demonstrate proficiency at some point? Greater flexibility and more of a personalized approach for, for students. Valuing teacher judgment and expertise. They do have expertise coming into our system. And they are the best to evaluate, to be able to evaluate where a student is on that trajectory. And so we need to value that. Developing more equity and consistency, because there's nothing more inequitable and inconsistent than the traditional grading system as, as we look at those studies about English teachers and math teachers and the variability that, that it creates. Balancing both formative and sub and assessment, better communication, and obviously opportunities for students to engage in that. Expectations for teachers, really, we really tried to drill down on this. If you're going to engage in this, you need to communicate, 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 communicate what you're doing. Nothing will derail this for a teacher or a school or a district faster than poor communication to parents about what you're doing with grades. Again, grading is so high stakes and parents have a piece in that. That if you're not communicating clearly, the difference really causes some anxiety. And, and you have to communicate. Now, this is actually a, a better way of communicating to you about what your student's able to do. And then, so communication upfront, aligning your instruction to that, and then how do you report? With that, that, that's really where we're at. Moving forward, our instruct, we took a pause this past year with the pandemic on our district committee. We see that really wrapping back up and picking up where we left off this fall, both in the elementary and secondary. This gives you a taste of where we've been and the direction we're moving. I see this as an ongoing conversation with you as a board. I think that's, that's critically important, particularly as we continue to evaluate that initial question, what is the purpose of grades? With that, I'll entertain questions.
Go ahead, Rebecca. Okay, I have three. Just to preface this. Um, okay, so I've read the book that was given to us about standards-based grading, and I feel like I have a pretty good understanding of the concept of it and why and whatnot. It makes a lot of sense to me. But there's some challenges that I've seen in my own personal family that I wonder if you could maybe help me figure out how to overcome. Okay, so the first is, how do we avoid kids falling behind? Because we say we want to give multiple opportunities to demonstrate proficiency, and I understand that. But what happens in my own personal experience with my son, who is pretty severely ADD and has a really hard time keeping up to begin with. But when he is trying to master the subject matter that he didn't get, the teacher is continuing on with the next subject matter. And so now he's trying to master both at the same time, and then he gets into this perpetual state of being behind. And he never shows more than an F on his grade, ever, until like he, till the very last day of the semester when he spends hours and hours and hours. And this isn't to say that he's been slacking the whole time. He has been, he has been there after school multiple times every week trying to make up and redo tests and assessments and things like that. So that's one of the biggest problems I feel like we see with standards-based grading. And I feel like that also gives like so much favoritism to like the smart kids who have no problems keeping up. So how do we overcome that?
It's an outstanding question. It's an important question because I dare say that most, not few, but most parents are in a similar situation. And there, there's many layers in, in response. Obviously, first and foremost, we have to develop consistency across the district on, on what it is and how we go about doing this, this new way of, of reporting and giving feedback to parents and to students and how we engage. It really changes the role of the teacher. You cannot take, to old, use an old adage, you can't pour new wine into an old bottle. And then in some sense, what I've heard you say is, is we're taking the new, this new kind of grading, reporting and feedback system, and we're going to continue to teach in the same old way. And, and you can't, you have, it changes your instruction, it has to change your instruction. Teachers have to think through, I have, how am I going to embed multiple opportunities? How do I empower students to, to, to take greater ownership in that? Right? And that, that's going to require teachers to think through differently about their instruction. That's why we've started to talk about it as a, a standards-based learning system, as, as opposed to merely a standards-based grading. Because it's going to, has to change the instructional model for the teacher. They can't continue in the old, the old fashion of, okay, did you get it? Great, we're moving on. It, it, it change, it has to change the equation that way. We have to do better job reporting to, to students and parents because I think it's a true misnomer to say that student, your child is earning an F up until that very last day. A more accurate description may be that they're continuing, they're in progress, they're making, we need to be better and have more sensitive measures to say what the progress is and report that as opposed to saying a letter grade, you're an F, an A, or B, or C. It, that just is, again, I think that, again, is new wine and old bottle. We, we've got to get better at how, how we communicate. Because that's, that's an inaccurate description of where your child is in that progression throughout the quarter.
Okay. Okay, so then, next question then. So then how do we educate parents on this? Because this was, this is where, this is what happens in my house all the time, is my son's got an F until the last day, and my husband is irate because he hasn't read the little green book that we were given, and he doesn't understand. And I try to explain it to him, and it's really difficult to explain. So what are our efforts going to be? Because I have had a lot of people reach out to me. And this takes hours
That's right.
and a full mind shift for parents to really kind of understand what we're doing. So what are we gonna, how are we gonna help the parents?
It's disruptive to the family, particularly on the weekend when privileges seem to go away.
Right. My son has a lot of privileges taken away on a regular basis because of this.
Yeah, it's really disruptive to parents who only know the traditional fashion. And they're thinking, oh my gosh, my child is failing. I, I've seen this, if we don't do it well, I've seen it derail efforts by countless years in, in schools and districts. And what it requires is ongoing, consistent, constant communication about what you're doing. You have, and that's why if you look at the teacher expectation, number one is that course syllabus. You got to clearly define it. And that's in and of itself is insufficient. You know, I encourage schools to have parent meetings, ongoing meetings. There should be communicate, additional communication that's going out at the end of every quarter. The more we engage parents on a personal level and not leave it to power, for them to kind of seek it out and power school or seek it out on their own, we have to extend, um, extend ourselves to them and help them understand it, the more successful we'll be. My experience has been absent that, this will fail. Because there's just too much that's riding on it from a parent's perspective. And we'll just, we'll just, we'll have, we, they, we need a partnership with them. And if we're unable to bridge that, then there'll be a pushback and we'll be at odds and that, and we don't want that.
So then is that left to the school level? Is each individual school responsible for doing that? Because I haven't really seen anything.
Currently, as we're venturing into this, right now I can speak for the secondary schools. We have pilots. I think there's one school that's probably more than anyone else is more aligned to do it school-wide. And that would be Dixon Middle School. Because they just have a lot of the foundation set and teachers are more practiced in it, they're closer to it. But it really is right now on the principal and the school and in the department, the teacher. If you're going to do this, you've really got to communicate it really well, and it's on them. We're trying to build the systems. That's one of our, our tasks going forward is building the systems. And a communication system is a key part, a key part of that.
Okay. I would, yeah, I would love to see education nights or something, something going forward. And then also, the last one is, um, how, how do we incentivize good behavior with the system?
Good question.
Because that is what I find is also really lacking in my oldest, who's trying to kind of navigate this where if he doesn't have to do the work, he is not going to. And I don't find that, I, I feel like that's human nature. That's just anywhere you go with any age group. So how do we incentivize these kids to do their work and do it on time?
It's a really important question. And I'll share with you, I was, at one point I was talking with the, the head of H, of Human Resources for Intel. And this is years ago. And he made the comment that we hire for what you know, we fire for what you do. And what struck me is that there is really a place there for, for behavior. The problem is, is in the traditional system, that behavior conflates with achievement and it's hard to determine. Like student number two had really good behaviors of on time, turning the homework in, such and such. But it's questionable whether or not they understood the material. Schools that, that have really ventured into this, districts have ventured into this, have really tried to separate that. And so you start to see that there are two, kind of two reports. There's, there's the achievement, what they've mastered and what they know according to the standards. And then there's what they're calling an employability score. And that's where the behaviors live. Are they, are they timely? Do they show up, right? We had a former principal that says, you know, the keys to success, get up, dress up, and show up. Little of that is achievement, all of that's behavior. So there is a place for this. We've got to begin, become more sophisticated in how we're reporting that to families. And to separate that from the achievement piece.
So we have a report card that includes more than just a grade, an A?
Possibly, possibly.
Yeah, so my question, you kind of mentioned a little bit, is, is where are we at right now district-wide? I know there are some pilots in certain departments at certain schools, but are all the teachers aware we're headed this direction? Is there a plan to get everybody on board with standards-based grading by a certain time? Is it just whoever feels like it will do it and those who don't, don't have to jump on? I mean, what are we trying to accomplish and what's the timeline?
That's a great, that's a great question. And I think that's part of the reason we're engaging you at this point. Yeah, because we're, I think, at a, a tipping point of, of going direction, one direction or the other. And having you invested in this is critical. You know, right at this point, I'll say is we, we have pockets. Well, let me back up and say, the, the strategy to this, because it is, again, such a personal change. It's a personal change for the teacher when they start to reflect upon their own grading practice, as well as it is for families. You know, the approach of this has been kind of somewhat of a top-down, bottom-up approach. Where we're trying to grow buy-in from, from teachers from the bottom up and start to provide some direction centrally to give them good guidance. And we're getting to that point where we're meeting and it's a determination of, is this something that we're going to push forward district-wide or we can continue just to allow these pockets kind of percolate? I can say for, I can speak specifically to secondary schools. Every secondary school has a pilot that's moving forward that I can identify. As I mentioned, I have one, one school that I believe is, is getting close to, to a school-wide effort where they have enough of a foundation. But again, I think it's, we as a district, including you as a board and giving us guidance, need some direction. Is this something we're going to continue to push forward district-wide? Or is this something that we're just going to work in, in isolation at different sites? Those that have really ventured into this, they're starting to see how it changes their instruction. And I, I would dare say that they're starting to see the differences it's making for students. I have personal experience with my own children that, that were fortunate enough to go through a class where a teacher has been doing this for a number of years. And what a difference that has made in probably the most rigorous course there is in high school. And that's physics. And, and the outcomes of that are incredible. Not just in terms of grades, but secondarily, how it transfers into state testing. The highest marks in the state, and he takes all kids. So there, there's, there's a lot of evidence of the impact this can have in terms of student achievement.
Todd, let me add. So we've been, we've been looking at this, we've been studying it for a few years. Probably four or five summers ago, we brought out the author of the book, Ken O'Connor. And he spoke to teachers and administrators and people throughout the entire district. He's probably one of two or three genuine experts in this worldwide. And Todd's mentioned another named Tom Guskey, who works at the University of Kentucky. The challenge is these folks are getting up there in age, but they will tell you that you don't try to force this onto a system that, because teachers do see grades as very personal. As Todd has mentioned earlier, it takes a little while for this to really embed itself into the system. And I think that's one of the reasons why it's so messy. Because different people are reporting in different ways. You can have a student who is with seven different teachers in a given day, and two or three of them will be using this approach, and some of them will be using the old style. And so just trying to sift through why we have so many different models to how we're issuing grades is, it seems a little crazy. But it's just part of the messiness that goes with the, the full and, and complete implementation of a grading system like this.
Let me just, just add, I know time is, is tight. You know, my professional experience with this, I've seen a district that really engaged in this. It took them fifteen years before it was really embedded K-12. Now, that begs the question, can it go fa, can you go faster than that in terms of implementation? It's possible, but it is, I think, such a personal change for teachers individually that, as the superintendent has mentioned, that, you know, you have to, you have to be really cautious about that, that kind of a change.
I don't know if, I don't know if, if this is what she's doing, but I went, I sat through Ms. Hex's class, Ms. Hex's class at Dixon. I think that's her name, but she, like, it kind of blew my mind how the class was taught and how it was organized. And like, she wasn't really teaching, she was just going from desk to desk to help a student. And it seemed like all the kids were engaged. I was incredibly impressed by it. But I, my issue is how are they going to duplicate this among different teachers? And it, there's kind of a similar evolution in the law. Where, where it used to be in the law, you, you have Brightline tests where there's a lot of inequity because if you have a strict test, people, I don't know, they, they have these weird cases and so they, they lose and it's not very fair. But the alternative is, and I think this is kind of analogous to what we're thinking of doing, is where you, you have all these different, you have like a nine-part test or nine elements that you look at. And so judges have to go through and they have to look at all these different elements when they determine whether something is legal or not legal, or okay or not okay. And the problem with that is it brings in a lot of litigation. Because it all depends on a particular judge. And so And so are we worried that everything's going to be a litigation where parents, they're like, well, you know, you have this element, and this element, my kid had this, 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 I don't know why he, because eventually it's the grade that counts because of the things you said, because it, it matters. And so the parents are going to say, well, I had all these issues, why did I not get that grade? And so then it, everything's going to be a fight for our teachers.
No, I, that's, uh, it's an excellent point. And what it speaks to, to me is, again, the power of bringing people together to develop common standards and the clarity of the rubric. If you have really clear descriptors in the rubric of which that grade is, that grading is based upon, hopefully that's going to help alleviate some of that interpretation. Because what I'm hearing is there's a lot of interpretation, whether I have the elements or not, and whether it, you know, you have sufficient evidence, right? This really is an evidentiary approach to learning. And it's not, and I'll say, it's not enough that a student has just demonstrated once that they are proficient. But do you have sufficient amount of evidence in addition to that to say that they've trans, made that transfer to long-term memory? And it really comes back to the power of that rubric and the clarity of the language and the power of the communication that, that you set forth as a common, that is common across schools.
Are teachers, are they pretty much given the latitude to determine the weight of each element in a particular case? Or do they say, well, you know, I think this is worth a little bit more for this kid because he has these issues, and, and they're giving some flexibility? It's just, it goes back to, uh, how much fighting is this going to result in?
Now, you're really starting to, to dive down into some key questions that we're unpacking. There's this idea that we've get into maybe three different levels of, of feedback. There's a product indicator, there's a process, and I forget the, the third one offhand. But I, you know, with our time being short, I'm more than happy to engage any board member that wants to talk further about this. There are just so much here, and personally, I think this is, is the fundamental change education needs to be going through. Because it changes that relationship between the student and the teacher.
I, I have one technical question. I had a teacher email me, and she said she's required to teach science, and the students are required to take the RISE science test, but there's no spot on the, their report card to put a science grade. So who's in charge of fixing that? Is there a middle?
Good.
Our area, I'd have to know more detail, maybe offline, we can problem solve and solve that for you.
Okay.
Okay. If you have further questions about this, please direct them to Todd, and I appreciate this and the direction that we're going. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move the state audit compliance to the first part of our business meeting. So if there's a motion to adjourn the study session?
So moved.
Okay, we are now at a study session. Tell me when are we ready, are we starting another YouTube or no? Okay.
Just keep it on.
Okay, uh, welcome. We are meeting as the Provo City School District Board of Education. It is Tuesday, June 22nd, 2021. And we are meeting at 2080 West, 940 North in Provo, Utah. And we will begin with a roll call, and we'll start with Stephanie.
Gina Hales, Board Member.
Jennifer Partridge, Board Member.
Rebecca Nielsen, Board Vice President.
Melanie Hall, Board President.
Keith Rattell, Superintendent.
Terry McCabe, Board Member.
Nate Bryson, Board Member.
Is there a motion to convene business meeting?
So moved.
All right, motion made by Board Member Nielsen. And we are now in business meeting, and I'm going to turn the time over to Devon Daly to talk about our state audit compliance.
Good morning. Um, one of our requirements every year is to perform a risk assessment that goes through all of the, um, the basic areas of accounting and finance to make sure that we have controls in place to be able to mitigate any risk that, um, happens in a district. So we performed the risk assessment. We have several policies and procedures in place and controls in place that give us a, a very low-risk score, which is what the, the state auditor is looking for. The one thing I want to point out, there's actually two. There is a safe schools training at the end of, at the beginning of every school year for ethics. All districts are, districts employees are required to complete it as is the board. So as that comes out, make sure that that gets complete. And then the two new board members, Gina and Terry, there is a training on the state auditor website that just needs to be completed sometime in your first four years of being in the board. And that link is there, and when you finish, if you would send me the certificate, I just have to prove that it has been done sometime in the fir, in your four years of, of service.
Devon, that link isn't active on this PDF, so if you'll send it to me.
I will send a new link. Are there any questions? It's all pretty self-explanatory on the, on the assessment. If you have any specific questions, I can take them. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Devon.
Thanks, Devon.
All right, uh, next, uh, we're going to have a discussion about the, or a motion about the vaping litigation. Keith, do you want to start that?
Yeah, I can just start by saying that I did contact one of our attorneys, Joan Andrea Fabian Van Cot. Fabian Van Cot does have some attorneys who represents Jewel and one of the other potential defendants. So, um, they have declined. I did speak with Derek Marshall of Seiler, Anderson, Fife, and Marshall. They're a local firm that we do business with on a regular basis. They actually advised us that they feel that we have really no issues in taking this on. Their only little caution was that if we're the first listed of the school districts that are signing on, then we might get most of the attention when media and other places want to come calling and getting information about our thoughts about this or that. But that's really it. They, they see no real problems on this, and as you remember, there's no cost to us to participate in this. There may be some, uh, if there's a penalty that is assessed to the defense, and if we were to be on the side that wins this particular litigation case, there might be some kind of, for lack of a better term, monetary compensation for us. But we don't think that that would be very much. It wouldn't be significant. It would just be a matter of essentially doing something that would potentially protect students. So no objections from the attorney.
Do we have a motion on this item?
I move that the district join the vaping class action lawsuit.
Motion made by Board Member Nielsen, is there a second?
I second that.
Second by Board Member Partridge, is there any further discussion on this motion?
I had a question. How, what's, how bad is vaping in the school district? Do we know? Do we have numbers? How many kids are vaping per day in the school district, or are caught?
Doug, maybe you might have the best insight on that, given the safety committee discussions.
Do we know anything?
It's probably hard to give you very concrete data, because again, it's not something that we have ability to see all times that it occurs. As was mentioned in the, in the, people who presented last two weeks ago. It's, it's something that's very easy for individuals to conceal. It's even embedded in clothing. You can get a hoodie that has it built into the drawstring, you can have it look like a zip drive, a pen. And, and there's a lot of innocuous ways that you can do it without being caught. As you can see, one of the things that was part of the class action suit was to try and put sensors in place that can maybe help us find out when it's occurring, particularly in locations that don't have cameras associated with like restrooms and locker rooms, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Doug, do you remember what the results of the SHARP survey?
That's where I was going to go, Keith, is that we, when self-reported, I think that we said that about four in 10 students said they, they had explored or tried vaping in the secondary schools. So maybe around 40% self-report that they have explored or tried once or more using a vape device.
That's just our school district?
Well, I think that, that it was kind of counting numbers, uh, that disaggregate that down to our, our individual schools. It was not something that was available from the SHARP data. It would take a follow-up survey to, to do that. So that's kind of a Utah county number that we just anticipate at that level, that that's a fairly high propensity. Probably of all the substances we use, or they're concerned about that are legal, is the one that we're seeing the most prevalent. Just anecdotally, when I'm working with students who come to me for, you know, significant behavior concerns, this one's probably the most common one I've seen that comes to me for, uh, district action to take as it relates to habitual patterns. And I find that it's very habitual. I'll meet with, I think, three different times this spring, I met with a student over this issue. We put them on a, a contract to change the behavior, and some checks and balances in place with home and with family. And then just within the, a matter of like three to four weeks, they had re-offended and were back having to, to account for their behaviors again. In other words, the ability for someone to change the behavior was very, very difficult, just from my experience.
I heard the Ogden, they already approved it, so we won't be on the lawsuit.
First one.
Yeah, so we, we won't be the, the thing on the lawsuit. I wasn't here last week when we talked about it, but, uh, the attorney who came and presented, I've known him for a long time. He, uh, he moved into my scout troop, and no one liked him because he was a nerd. And he kicked me out of, I mean, I invited him into my tent because no one wanted him in the tent, and then he kicked me out because I was dirty. But despite that, despite that, uh, I, I think it's a good idea because I don't really like class action lawsuits, but I do like getting money for free as a school district.
Well, and as I mentioned in our last board meeting, Mary James had brought this to our attention at the Safety Committee, saying this is a problem in the schools, and we need to start taking care of it.
And I've heard Centennial Principal's very concerned too.
So, okay, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Uh, next, we need to approve the Sex Education Committee membership. Keith, do you want to just briefly talk about that?
Yes, as you know, um, the state is very directive when it comes to sex education. Lots of reasons for that. And so, um, one of the elements of, of being in compliance with state guidelines is to ensure that we have a representative group of parents and educators who meet throughout the year, and that this, uh, committee is, is updated every year. There may be some people who are brought on and others who are relieved of that duty for a period of time. You'll see this pretty much every year, and this has to be approved before June 30th.
Is there a motion on this item?
I move that we approve the proposed membership of the District Sex Education Curriculum Materials Review Committee.
Motion made by Board Member Hales, is there a second?
I second it.
Second by Board Member Bryson, sorry. Uh, is there any further review on this or discussion on this motion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Do we know when the cycle C nominations should be happening? Any, like a year from now or something?
I don't know, I can get that answer for you, but if Emery were here, she would be able to answer that question.
Okay. Before we adjourn, I just want to make a special note that today is our business administrator, Stephanie Bryant's last day. Or not last day, but last business and study session with us. We have all been, I can't speak for the whole board, but I have been very impressed. And it's been a pleasure to work with you, so thank you.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure to work with all of you, and I'll miss you all, I will.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
All right, we are done, thank you.
Have a good summer, everybody.
I know, we get July off.
August.
At this point, we think we do.